Yeah, it's actually item one and two renaming the Henke Road exit and the Route 364 improvements. As we've done some more additional research into this, part of the the roads are in Lake St. Louis. So Kathy's gonna set up a meeting with the Lake St. Louis, whoever the representative be, to sit down with them and talk to them about doing some of this stuff. So basically, we're just gonna postpone it for now.
Item number three concession stand proposals. Kathy? Okay, Mark, you these two items, you wanna?
Um, we won't have enough time. I mean, can we postpone it out? Uh, are you just postpone it or you have to set a date? I'd like to make a motion to postpone until the city administrator has time to confer with Lake St. Louis.
One favor?
Aye.
Phone one and two? Determined? We'll get an answer.
Do thank you. The city solicited proposals on February 24th for concession services. Proposals were due on March 11th. We were-
Is that working? Sound? Is that coming through here?
Testing, testing.
Those volumes need to be turned up. I know they're weird. Gotta kinda guess. This is kinda low too.
Testing, testing.
Testing.
That's that's this one here, but it just seems like it's very low.
Testing, testing. Can you hear that?
Ground control.
That's my sexy voice.
Okay, I think I can do that. The city solicited proposals for concession services on February 24th. Proposals were due on March 11th. The city received two proposals, one from Burnett Enterprises, who the city has used for the past several years, and a second proposal was received from Classic Red Hots. After reviewing the qualifications, references, and compensation to the city, it is staff's recommendation that the city enter into a contract with Classic Red Hots for concession services for 2025, with options to renew for 2026 and 2027. Classic Red Hots is a family-owned business that has been in operation for over 10 years. They recently moved their restaurant from Town and Country to O'Fallon and are looking to expand their operations. In addition to the restaurant, they also operate food carts that are used for events throughout the metropolitan area and have a catering business. They operated Chesterfield Valley Athletic Concessions and provide cart services for the city of Olivette and special event services for the Crossing Churches in both Chesterfield and O'Fallon. The owner, Jason Abrams, has a long history in concession services, including experience at Six Flags in Texas and with the Texas Rangers for two years. All of the references that I spoke to spoke very highly of Jason Abrams and Classic Red Hots. He's professional, courteous, has quality products, provides excellent customer service, and I believe that we would have a positive partnership with Classic Red Hots for our concession and special event services. You can see the menu up here that they will be offering. It's a full menu of products, including hot dogs, burgers, brats, Italian beef, candy, ice cream, sodas, brownies, and they also have beer and wine. The prices look to be very reasonable, consistent with what you would expect at a concession stand. Item number three, bill number on the board agenda this evening, bill number 25-18 is an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to negotiate a contract for concession services. They're currently offering 5% of their concession sales, up to 7% in years 26 and 27. Overall, the compensation, I think, was, got the number written down, like $7,400 to the city. This is more than we've received in the past. Our concessioneer was providing us $2,000 a month. So I'm asking that, since we only received two bids and we would really like to get the concession stand open and operating for the 2025 season, that the board do two readings this evening.
You got a question on that?
Absolutely.
Um, Red Hot does estimate the gross sales of 37,500. Another guy estimates gross sales of, is it here, $1,800. That's quite a bit of difference.
Eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand, I'm sorry, eighteen thousand. It's quite a bit of difference in the two.
It is. We have no sales data from our concessionaire. They were supposed to provide reports, but we have no financial reports from the concessionaire. No idea what their sales actually have been to have any numbers to offer to any party. Also heard comments, I think, from elected officials that they weren't operating the concession stand specifically, and so perhaps sales lower. He's just making an estimate on what he thinks they-
Yeah, that just something really brought to my attention. I mean, that's a big difference between the two.
Sure, yes. So we actually asked specifically for five to nine, Monday through Friday, consistent with the ballgames. They'll they'll wanna be there whenever we have events. So they'll do our concert events as well, anything that we want. I can lead to them.
But go on, we're not, if you're correct, we will more simply provide the tickets and stuff.
According to the contract, they're supposed to be providing us a month. So we're gonna be hearing from both the contract. Because that was my understanding. Helpability. I I just wanted to make sure we had on record.
I have a question about, I have a question about the food sales versus alcohol sales. The vendor that we've had had a liquor license and alcohol sales as well. Is the projections of 38,000, is it put in there, is that alcohol sales as well, or is that?
So is it 38 or 37? I think 37. So 37 times 5% is only like $1,800? Ready? The next year is about 23? Oh. How is this? Yeah. Okay, right, okay. So green. Any other questions or comments? Okay, moving forward. Item number four, amend city code for employment of a city engineer. Kathy? Item number five, review of the board of aldermen and general. Questions or comments from anybody on the regular agenda? Okay, go ahead. Hey?
I have just, I'm in on the American CID. And I just wanna let the board know that I did some cover some CID. There's nothing significant to report. PDD and the CID continue to do service as expected. All this expected and they are paid off. Um, any questions? Happy to answer right now.
Hey? Do you have communications? Moving staff communicate? The attorney? City engineer town. Kathy? See, move through. Hey? I just wanna add that as far as capital improvements go, we had to the tune of quarter of a million to half million of things that need to be done. Like Barrett Haven Trail, there's there's sections of there that, you know, it's our responsibility to maintain that trail. And back when that trail was put in, the, it was a million dollars a mile to put trail in, okay? Today, with Great Rivers Greenway, it's three million. A mile to 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 tear up a trail and redo it. So there's one mile of trail around that lake. It's going on. Thank you. And so there are sections that at this time need to be replaced. I mean, multiple years ago, there was $100,000 to replace a small section on the far side of the trail that never got done. So there's there's a lot of things that needs to be done. So this money isn't sitting there. It could be just, you know, handed out to residents, like some some have implied. Uh, it's allocated, so and it's it's gonna be used. Just our road fund, okay? That transportation fund, okay? We borrowed 5.8? Against it? Which we have to pay back over 15 years. And I think it's 600 some thousand a year, I don't know. Like it, what is it? It's it's a it's a big amount that we have to pay back to pay back that loan out of that transportation fund. So from the end of the year, when that note comes due, that that's gonna come away. Okay? So, I mean, yeah, right now, all of this, we got $10 million sitting in the bank. It's it's pretty much all allocated for things to be done, so. Mm-hmm. Right. Right. Mm-hmm. And I know when it comes to street maintenance, I mean, we've got streets that are pushing 30 years old and they were they were poured thin and no base on them and they're failing. They're failing pretty regularly. So, I mean, I know when Tom did our road plan, we were looking at one to two million a year just for maintenance, you know, so. Part of our capital improvements and road maintenance would be a aggressive crack ceiling plan. We're talking a quarter of a million dollars easy just in crack ceiling. So. Anyway. Okay, guys. Okay, alderman?
I don't have anything now, but Kathy, this was excellent. I mean, you broke everything down to a T. Makes sense. Um, thank you. Thank you so much.
Second to that, really appreciate the breakdown. Very informative. Make it look easy.
Oh, can you go back for a quick, sorry, back there.
No, no, no. They have to be fixed.
They have to be fixed before we get, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah. Discussion. I hope he does. Told him, I said, we wanted us to take them. North. I just got a quick question for Tom. When it comes to bike lane, you know, there's several rules. Biden just slightly, and it has a share the road bike lane on it. That.